Twenty-one regular council meeting to order. Thank you for coming, joining us by whatever means. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
It stands one nation under God.
You King, would you please do the roll call?
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
And Demers.
Here.
Robert De Sina. Jeff. Jeffrey.
President.
Here.
Ms. Maris. Anthony Debona.
Here.
Louis Raza. And Robert Ritalik. And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council this evening?
So we have two, Catherine Camaro. And then Al was on, but he took, it went down. So we have Catherine and Al.
Okay, Catherine, would you like to speak with us, please?
I didn't unmute me right away. Catherine Camera, Thirty-One Cottage Place. I think that the council needs to clarify the functioning of the town council email address. For starters, if, if meetings are not held in person and a resident wants all the members of the council to have documents, it would seem that the way to get them to you would be through that email address. And that, that doesn't appear to be happening, and it's not just with the council, but with other commissions. So I think there should be some clarification about virtual meetings for all the boards, the commissions, and the council, because if, if you were there in person, you could hand out information, but we're not in person. So if the residents are trying to get something that they want council members or commission members to, to look at, it would be nice to know how we're supposed to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I also asked to be provided with a copy of that policy that Ms. Rosa presented at the last meeting before the public participation, but I didn't receive it. And, and I think you should all be aware that anything obtained through Freedom of Information can be published and discussed, no matter what the town policy is, because that was established years ago with me. And I will send you that information so that you can see how it played out. It's kind of become quite obvious over the last month that we're moving towards a police town where the residents' freedom of speech is being limited. So thank God for the Internet. But what I really wanted to say tonight is, Section 311 of the Town Charter states that the council shall have the power to investigate any and all departments, offices, and agencies of the town. It does not say that the town attorney is responsible for those investigations under Section 311. So if the council wants to put the town attorney in charge, that's the council's decision to incur those legal fees. And having said that, under Charter Section 311, I'm requesting that the council investigate the town manager's office with respect to the purpose of the memorandum that was dated January 6th, 2021, to all department heads that concerned me. I'm greatly disturbed by this and have several issues to bring to your attention. And since I am not clear on your policy as it would relate to a 311 request, I'm going to follow up with this in the town council email, so long as I know that my email is going to be distributed to all members of the council as if I were hand-delivering it tonight. Can you, can you tell me if that will be the case?
I will make sure it is.
Okay.
I now, I now know how to forward from an iPad, so I can make sure that it does go forward.
Okay, so rather than give you what the 311 will say, because I don't know what the policy is, you will just get it through the email in the next day or two. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is Al's hand still up there?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Mickle, would you like to speak with us?
I certainly would.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank the chairwoman for trying to handle all my questions during the last meeting. I appreciate that. But I don't think I was clear on some of them, and I'd like to try to make them a little clearer now.
Okay.
Basically, when I brought up the topic of background checks, I didn't realize the police department only does background checks on criminal-type, police-type activities. Therefore, the Park and Rec Commission asked to go to the state to get their background checks. The state's charge about $36 a background check, and with her budget amount, she can probably get about 42 background checks in. It's consistent with the last several years of the number of background checks. So I think that was perfectly reasonable, and my question was answered. What wasn't reasonable in my questions was the overtime for the ZBA. They have averaged about $600 a year for, for overtime for sidewalks. This year, they're $1,200. I don't know if they're expecting twice as many sidewalks as they did last year. So that just seemed a little unreasonable to me. Lastly, I think you were right again about this senior center director. As I found out, I, I checked on Google, thank goodness for Google, the average senior center director salary in the state of Connecticut is $68,000 a year. You certainly were right. It's been underfunded, and maybe what you've put in there might not be enough. I, I think that's about it. I'm sure you're going to go over why the fire district didn't let you know about the increased fire hydrant fees. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there anyone else here who says that's indicating they want to talk to us?
At this time, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Not seeing anyone else, we'll close public comment and move on to the minutes, please.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 1st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Ken Demers. Anyone have any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as presented to them, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there anyone that's abstaining? Notes are approved unanimously by those attending. We're down to the chair's comments. I had several questions to the email with regard to the limitation I put on public participation. And I responded to those individuals, to each individual that inquired. I guess the easiest way to say it is it's my prerogative as chairman to limit. It is not something the council voted on, and it is not something I went to any other, or I was asked if I went to any other organization to obtain guidance. No, I did not. I've had a lot of experience in dealing with employees' rights, violation of those rights, and the impact that has on the municipality. I'm trying to expect the town to make sure that every employee is treated fairly, and there's no comments that are inappropriate or even controversial are made at any public forum that we willingly allow to take place. Catherine was right, there was an issue with regard to the length of time forwarding something that was asked to be forwarded to all council members, and that was my fault because I didn't know how to forward on an iPad, but I have since learned how to do that. And so anything that is forwarded to the council in the future via the email will definitely reach the council immediately. I think the minutes that were just approved at the March 1st meeting detail exactly what we will allow and encourage people to do if they have a concern or a comment or a question with regard to any employee. So certainly feel free to, to read those. We had two written communications, one from the Crestbrook Retirees Golf League, and we had one with regard to supporting additional staffing at Crestbrook. And we had a communication from an individual, Corky Plurid, with regard to staffing of the Social Services Department. Both of those communications will be attached to the minutes so that anyone can read them. And the last thing I have is, tonight will conclude the budget presentations to us by various departments. Tomorrow night, we have the Board of Ed budget presentation. Once we're done with all of those, we meet again on April 5th. It'll be a workshop at which time, so new council members are aware, we discuss the different department budgets, and council members have that opportunity for input whether they believe a particular department should have their budget increased, decreased, can ask particular questions if something else has come to light in the meantime. At that point, we should be coming up with the final number that we will send forward that will go to public hearing. Then at public hearing, the public has the opportunity to comment and give us their feelings on the information we've brought forward. So I guess it's a reminder to council members to be ready for the April 5th meeting and your notes or comments or questions with regard to the various departments. And, and I would hope if you have any in-depth questions, how particular numbers were reached, you would get to the town manager's office and have him either forward your call to the particular department involved, or get the information for you in writing, whichever is appropriate, depending on your question. Okay, I think we can move on to the town manager's report.
Good evening, Honorable Chairwoman and members of the town council, Mark Ramo, town manager. Just an update memo, our COVID-19 vaccine course, we successfully vaccinated more than 600 people since our launching of the COVID-19 vaccine clinic. This past Saturday, we worked with the Board of Education to vaccinate many of their employees in local parochial school employees, daycare, and bus drivers. We again had many volunteers consisting of staff, council, friends, and family. We are scheduled out to vaccinate through the second week of April, which is including our second dosages. We also conducted a COVID-19 test site at the Watertown High School this past Saturday, and have another scheduled this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the same location. I want to thank all the volunteers and staff who take, took the time to support this effort, especially our new superintendent, Villanueva, who spent the whole day registering attendees. Negotiations, I've had additional meetings with the white-collar union, and we are currently addressing financial issues. In regards to our senior center coordinator position, as you know, our senior center coordinator retired in December, and that position has been left unfilled. I will be posting the position tomorrow, and we will go through a standard hiring process. There has been an evaluation of the position, and at this point, I feel confident that we can post and attract the best candidate that best fits the needs of the department. Our Department of Public Works, with our public works directors impending retirement, I am in discussions with a civil engineering firm to evaluate our current projects and processes. Over the next few weeks, we will assess the job scope and responsibility to advertise for the position. Internal staff have divided up the workload as we move through the hiring process. The Watertown Hall project, excuse me, most of it, if not all of it, have responsibilities on finishing this project have been shifted to our purchasing agent, Donna Ford. She has been in contact with Burlington Construction and the many vendors that have worked, left to be complete. I have asked Gary Martin to temporarily assist Ms. Ford in getting more acquainted with the project and bringing it to a completion. Currently, I'm dealing with a number of personnel issues. If any council member would like more information, please contact me direct. And I have some positive news. The Youth Service Bureau of Watertown, I was asked to sit on the Youth Service Bureau Committee, and I've happily accepted. I attended my first meeting on March 9th, 2021, and was pleasantly surprised at the committee's, committee members' energy and commitment. The committee is looking forward to less restricted COVID-19 rules and has many ideas ready to work with our school community. I am a member of the Experimental Aircraft Association, EAA for short, which has a program that introduces aviation to school-aged children. Committee members preliminary discussed introducing this program for next year, and I'll keep you informed on its progress as we attempt to implement that program in the school system. For the newer council members, the Watertown Youth Service Bureau was established back in 2012 with the purpose of referring youth to local services, identifying, filling, filling the gaps in our services, and working to improve overall community conditions with our youth. And that's all, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I should know, and probably should have done it under chairman's report, to thank all of the fire department people and all of the town employees that came on a volunteer basis. You were, you were right to acknowledge that, Mr. Ramo. It's phenomenal how many people have given of their time, not just once, but every single Saturday for the last many Saturdays and into the future. We move on now to the section of the budget that is the committee reports, and the first one we have is the Public Works Department, which I understand is going to be divided up into highway and engineering. If the highway department, which is Bob Grandprie and Joe Valet, if you would begin that for us, will be happy to follow along in our budget book.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would, I'd like to introduce Paul Bonovich, who would, he, he will start with the introduction of the engineering budget, and then I'll take over after the engineering budget, if that's okay.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Sure.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairwoman, town council members, Paul Van Etten, town engineer. For those new to the, the council, I guess there are a few members, I just want to introduce the general layout of Public Works. There's six divisions. I'm head of engineering. That budget from last year is basically unchanged. There's actually some increase in there because there's a 53-week pay period for next fiscal year. That's almost 2% that's put us in our budget. Also, there's, as I think town manager mentioned, there's white-collar union contract negotiations that could have some effect on the cost, and we don't know those as of yet. As Bob said, his highway division is our biggest division, and that has an increase that's based partially on that 53-week pay period, and also on increased costs that he will go over with you. Snow removal is another division essentially run by highway that has some increased costs that he will also address. Solid waste has some increases because of tipping fees have gone up and fees in general. There may be some savings due to the landfill closure, which is due next June, I believe, of 2022, but we can speak of that later. Streetlights has gone down partly because of the LED conversion we've done in the number of units, but also because we just use less from last year, and that's what's in the budget, although this leaves no increases that possibly ever source may come up with increased electricity costs, although that's not happening as, as of yet. And the final division is street trees, which we maintain. There's a savings there due to the work at the cemetery was done last year, and that's reflected in the, in the decrease in street tree budget. So that's, that's all engineering's divisions.
If I may speak to the highway budget and the snow removal budget. The highway budget increase of an 8% is, like Paul had mentioned, due to contractual pay raises, reorganizing the management, and increased cost for trucks and equipment. For the snow removal division, there's also a slight increase due to the increased cost in.
Mr. Grandprie?
Yes.
Can you give a moment for Mr. Simmons to put the PowerPoint up for everybody? I think it'll be easier for everyone to follow.
Okay, sure.
You guys did all that hard work. You might as well put it up.
Yeah. That's where you are right now. Okay, that'll work. For snow removal, our snow removal costs have gone up. The increase is due to adding a snow removal machine for the park department and also the increased cost in salt and sand. Mostly the salt costs, which have gone up $10 a ton since last year, and they could possibly go up $10 a ton for next year due to the fact that the state of Connecticut has closed down one of two salt terminals, and the last one's in New Haven. So we're only going to be able to get salt from one terminal this year, type of sort of monopoly. So we're trying to prepare for that increased cost in, in salt. Paul covered the solid waste and streetlights and street trees. Staffing levels, is that the next? Well, we can go back to that part of our presentation. There we go. All right. Staffing levels have not changed. I mentioned slight cost, one of the reasons for the slight cost in the highway budget is a reorganization of the management, and what we're doing is we're trying to prepare for the future, so we don't get left without certain people in certain positions of management. And we're bringing people up to make sure that doesn't happen, and we have experienced people in the upper management.
Okay, just to, for those of you who may not know, the department's responsibilities include quite a list of things, 30 miles of storm sewers we maintain, 28 detention basins, over 4,500 catch basins, 37 miles of sidewalks, four dams, although that is one less than a few years ago since the Hemingway Dam removal project has been completed, 26 bridges and culverts under 20 feet in length, and six bridges over 20 feet, 138 miles of accepted paved roads, and just over one and a half miles of dirt road. So there's a lot of responsibility for the public works department. Am I going to the programs?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and other council members. My name is Joseph Valet. I'm the Assistant Town Engineer. I'm going to talk a little bit about engineering programs that we use for doing the road work in town. One of them is the Town Road Aid. That budget is not going to increase or decrease this year. LoSi, which is the Local Capital Improvement Program, that budget also is not increasing or decreasing this year. That is all state-funded. Then we have Lake Witten, my road, Exbury Road, one of our engineering projects. This here is a safety improvement for sightline in that area. Hungerford Avenue is basically 60% designed, and that is a full road reconstruction project.
I could just mention Sunset Avenue, Joe, that's a, a local resident cooperative of a drainage situation. It comes from Taff School, and in the backyards of these five or six residences on Sunset Avenue in Watertown. That's been designed, approved for wetlands, and it's ready to go for the spring. The cost is borne by the homeowners, although engine, or highways supplying some pipe, some materials for, but that's all a local residence project.
Okay. Falls Avenue Culvert replacement, that is 95% complete as far as design.
It's in wetland, this was submitted last week. Hopefully that'll go out for bid this spring to create a possible flooding. Well, I said a collapsing culvert, your wagon wheel cart that's in danger of failure, and we want to replace that as soon as possible. Depot Street?
Depot Street reconstruction, again, that's basically going to be a mill and fill. We are doing drainage work from Main Street south towards Depot Mall, and that is 100% and in-house and ready to go this spring. Wilson Street Bridge is basically in the state's hands for completing the property acquisitions at this time. Our pavement program, again, we have 2019 Public Works Bond, that basically is covering Section 5. And the 2013 bond program, that is Falls Avenue and Ice House, which is not on here. Now the LoSi, which is the Local Transportation Improvement Program. This here, we have the Novita Greenway, which is going to be an in-house design. The STEAP grant, which is basically the RSA improvements on Main Street. The Community Connected Grant, that is on Bumper Hill between the town line of Waterbury and Watertown, that is still in process, we're still waiting for a few more things to come in. The Transportation Alternative Grant, that's Stealing Brook Greenway, that is going to be handled by an outside firm at this point.
We're getting a grant from the state.
Right, there's a, there's a whole grant in all this, which is basically an 80%, 20%, I believe.
Don't forget Gurnsey Town Road Midwest, that's been designed, and there's some property acquisition issues there also.
Correct.
The state's handling that.
Now, we get us back to Bobby.
For catch basin repairs, that is, catch basin repair is not only in preparation for paving roads, we, we like to get the drainage and the catch basins up to stuff before we pave the roads. That's also just general repairs. A lot of times you'll see sinkholes next to catch basins or catch basin tops falling in. So that keeps us busy all year long. Equipment replacement, we have two trucks this year, we're replacing two dump trucks, one small and one large, $26,000 pound GSW, $66,000 pound GSW, that are replacing existing trucks that are almost 20 years old. Joe, you want Edgewood? Oh, Edgewood Avenue, Edgewood Avenue Stability. What it is, is Edgewood Avenue, if you're familiar with it, off of Main Street, goes up the hill, just past Fred's Car Wash. And what is actually happening is the road is sliding off into the ditch, is basically what's happening. And if you drive up Edgewood Avenue, you'll see a long crack following, parallel with the guardrail. The side of the road is actually sliding off into the, into the ditch, and they're going to drive stability sheets into the ground to hold the road in place. And then there's also the possibility that be in one way.
Yeah, the police commission is looking into possibly making that one way at the same time of trying to create an island on Cherry Avenue at Main Street, so there's only a left-hand or a right-hand turn, only no left-hand turn. And then as far as Middlebury Road and Vale Road Drainage, that is also an in-house project that Highway and us have been working on, but it also has gone out to bid to be completed. And then the traffic study again on Main Street, that has been done partially in-house as well as with the state's help, and we just got most of that information in today. If anyone needs that, we'll be glad to get that to you tomorrow or any other way as possible. This is basically the structure that we.
This is the current structure that we have. This is where. This is the current structure that we have. Uh, this is where everybody's placed right now. If you turn to the next page, you'll see where we are moving someone into the general foreman position, which we work uh under myself, but have authority over the two working foremen and also the rest of the crew. The person that we are selecting for this job not only uh has clerical duties, uh, but he will also have supervisory uh authorities over the guys. Similar to myself, but also to assist me in my job. And this, not only will this, uh, like I said, assist me in my job, but this will bring up a couple of guys from down below who are, have really good management skills and really good leadership skills, and we wanna get them into the right positions now uh so that we can make sure that the future of the Highway Department is uh properly led and supervised and future after a few of the older guys retire. So we're just kinda looking towards the future of the Highway Department. And so I've covered the solid removal and.
We didn't talk about the mirror stability.
Yep. Uh, the stability of the transfer station, the mirror transfer station down Echolake Road, which is where we bring our, our dumpsters. The, the burn plant in Hartford is gonna be closing. It's gonna increase our tipping costs quite a bit, and we're not sure where they're gonna land. We're not sure uh how long it's gonna be on the, if, if they have another catastrophic failure, we could be looking at increased tipping costs as, as soon as this year, not June of twenty twenty-two. We just have to be ready for it. So uh, that's what we're preparing for in the solid waste division of uh Public Works. And then we covered street lighting and the tree program. The tree program we have, uh, it's actually divided up into the ash tree program, on tree, on-call tree removal, and just our standard tree trimming, um, which we do. Standard tree trimming is trees that are hanging over the road, their branches are hanging over the road. They're hitting cars, they're breaking mirrors off the trucks, uh, general safety, hanging over sidewalks. Uh, the ash tree program is something that we do because pretty much every ash tree in town, in the state of Connecticut, in New England, is dead or dying, and they pose a safety hazard uh to everybody, the general public. So we've created this ash tree program to be proactive and take down the trees before they fall down. Uh, on-call tree removal, uh, that is more or less for emergencies. We usually use an outside contractor uh to take those trees down, um, and they're also emergency trees usually. Trees, and then.
Going back, local. Yeah, okay, the Local Capital Improvement Program I quickly touched on. This year, under that, we are basically gonna do the Georgetown Drive area. At this point, we are looking at total reclaiming, but to out there, and then putting down a, a whole new four inches of asphalt in the Section One area. And anyone can get the actual list of streets from us in engineering. Now, under the Town Road Aid, this is all the stuff that we will be working on. Road maintenance, crack seal, which is going out to bid shortly, chip seal, asphalt repairs, signs and guardrails, any that need to be replaced or repaired. Woodruff Avenue Sidewalk is still a program that we're working on from last year. We wanna finish the last section, which is basically going from Academy Hill down to the sidewalk ends right now. And then pavement rehab, Department Street area, that's Section Five.
If I can speak to signs and guardrails, the state has offered us a program, second year in a row. Uh, you may have noticed some arrow signs guiding you around corners in town. That is something paid for by the state. Uh, myself, Tony Montagno and Orietta Brady have gone through and uh reapplied to the state with a list of uh bad corners in town that uh, that we wanna take advantage of that program, and you may see more arrow signs going up in town on the corners. All right, if anyone has any comments, concerns, questions?
Uh, council members, is there anyone that has a question?
I do.
Can you get rid of that screen?
Yep, I'm gonna have to ask him.
I do, Madam Chair.
Hold on just one second. We're trying to clear this. Okay, good. All right, who's talking?
That's me, Jeff.
Yes, Jeff.
Um, I see uh a difference in the proposed side on the uh, on the highway portion of the budget. Um, the department proposal is four million, two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and the recommended is two million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three forty-three. Um, looking at it, it looks like a lot of it is in equipment. Can we, can I get an explanation from, from either you guys or from uh, from the town manager as to the reason for the large discrepancy there? That's almost two million dollars.
Madam Chairwoman, may I answer that?
Yes, please.
So when I first took office, I sat down with uh the Department of Public Works Director Roy Cavanaugh, and he had submitted a budget that he thought was reflective of all the items that were needed for his department. It was actually a seventy-four percent increase over what his last year's budget was. Uh, in fairness to Mr. Cavanaugh, I asked him to reduce that budget to a, originally I'd asked for a six percent increase. And then after realizing that there was a fifty-three week pay period, we asked him to adjust it to a ten percent increase from last year's budget. So this budget reflects what he originally proposed as a seventy-four percent increase in what was actually proposed with that uh reduction, which was actually a ten percent increase from last year.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chairwoman, I do.
Yes, Rachel.
Mr. Town Manager, that, that all makes sense. I'm just wondering, and I'm on the Public Works Subcommittee. Um, and so I know a little bit of the background here, and obviously there's some equipment, there's some paving, and, and so I, I know some of it is not obviously needed immediately, so it makes sense not to be in the budget. But I'm just, I'm wondering about some of the equipment in terms of um tobacco, the forklift, the truck, just wanting to make sure that we've got equipment that's, that's serviceable and usable without purchasing new equipment.
Again, I had put this back in uh the super, Roy Cavanaugh's hands and the Superintendent of Highway. They evaluated what equipment actually needed to be replaced, and they took out the items that they felt that they can uh wait to replace. They would certainly like all the equipment that was in the budget. And I would love to give it to them, but I don't think that we can do that all in one budget year. So I believe that, and Mr. Grand Prix could probably answer this better, that after reviewing it, that what is in this budget is what is actually needed for their, their departments.
Would you like me to take over?
Sure.
Um, Ms. Ryan, uh, the only thing we, we, we would have let budget down, our, 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 what we were asking for is the two, uh, the two dump trucks right now, uh, they're both about twenty years old. And uh, the backhoe, we believe we can get another year out of. The sweeper we had put in, we believe we can um, we were able to buy a parts machine from the state of Connecticut, uh, and we can get our sweeper through another year. So those, we took those out of the budget uh for this year. Uh, the only thing we've left in is, is the two dump trucks. One is a, a ten-wheel dump truck, and the other is a small, low-profile four-wheel-drive uh under C D L dump truck. So really, that's the only thing that we have uh as far as equipment goes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, Rachel?
Thank you. No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, then we'll move on to the Water and Sewer Department. Caterino. I believe that's page seventy-four in the budget book, if you're following along.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the council. Uh, my name is Vinnie Caterino. I'm the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Department. And this is the proposed water and sewer budget fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two. Uh, basically, we have, in our department, we have two main uh sections. One is water operations and the other one is sewer operations. The, the first section that I'll, I'll go over is the water operations budget. Um, Mike Simmons has a, uh, there is, he's putting up the, I might go down two, two more slides. Yeah, that one right there. Thanks. Okay, this, on your screen is our water operations budget. Uh, this shows our water, proposed water expenditures. Um, our biggest uh section of our budget is our purchase services, and that's for uh one million, eighty, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And that includes, our biggest cost is our uh water charge that we pay the city of Waterbury, because that's where we purchase our water from. And we're putting in the budget this year eight hundred thousand dollars. And uh, we're, you know, for the last twelve years, we're very, pretty close to what we project. And we're, I'm sure we'll be pretty close to this one also. Um, other items that's in purchase services is our legal costs, uh, billing costs, our pump maintenance, our electricity, our phone bills, and then any other services that we buy from other people or other utility companies. It also includes maintenance of water mains, our, our water main breaks, our replacement of valves, and so on. Our next, our next portion of our, our budget is our personal services, which is uh basically our cost for our employees. In our, in our department, we have a total of eight employees. We have one superintendent, one operations supervisor, two bookkeepers, one administrative assistant, and three utility maintainers. With this staff, it's uh sufficient enough to uh take care of the services that we need to provide uh our water and sewer customers. So, so basically, our total expenditures for water is one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, that's a slight decrease from last year's budget. It's approximately five thousand dollars decrease. And out of our, our water operations budget, we also pay, we have equipment and improvements, which is our water capital and our water extension fund. And that I'll go over towards the end of the presentation. Uh, next slide, Mike. The next part of our budget is our sewer operations budget. There's proposed sewer expenditures, as you could see on the uh slide, is uh one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Uh, and this also includes, very similar to the water operations. In purchase services, we're projecting approximately one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. And again, the biggest cost to that section is a sewage charge that we pay the city of Waterbury. This year, we're projecting uh one million dollars for uh sewage, for Waterbury to handle our sewage. And also, just like water operations, that includes um electricity, maintenance of our mains, uh manhole maintenance, sewer, sewer uh line inspections, building, and so on and so forth, basic services that we purchase from other people. Again, same thing, the uh personal services is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that's cost of our uh employees. That's the same as water operations. And then the other one is employee benefits, which is the same for sewer and water. And that's the uh healthcare, social security, Medicare, uh life insurance, and um, and those costs for employee benefits. Uh, so as I said, sewer expenditures is one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Again, that's also a slight decrease from last year's budget by, I think it's around fifteen or twenty thousand dollars less. And um our projected revenue for sewer operations is uh two million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred. So we have uh that extra fee that will be going back into our sewer operations uh fund balance. Wait, Mike, next slide. The next, the next slide shows our proposed water capital projects. Uh, typically, the first thing that we do is we, every year, we replace a certain number of hydrants. It ranges from ten to twenty. Um, this year, we're proposing ten new fire hydrants at four thousand dollars each. So that's forty thousand dollars. Uh, we always add a certain amount of money for water main material, which is uh water valves and um different types of equipment that, um, that we do replace some pipe. And we're putting in this year, we're putting ten thousand dollars for that. The next one is our three-hour fund, which is repair, replace, and rehabilitate miscellaneous uh items in our system. That's mainly for unexpected large cost items uh for emergencies, and we're putting forty thousand in for that. And the last item in water capital is a uh proposed three hundred and fifty-foot, eight-inch water main replacement in Frederick Street. Uh, we'll be replacing a two-inch galvanized line that's very old and is on the verge of failure. We've had a few breaks over the years, so now is the time to replace it. Frederick Street is located off of Hungerford Avenue, and that road is being proposed to uh be rehabilitated by Public Works. So we're gonna be doing some valve work in Hungerford, and this is a good time to replace Frederick Street also. So our total water capital fund is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, again, that's funded by our water operations fund. As far as water extension, this year, we're not proposing any extension funds, any extension projects. So there's nothing put into water extension. My next slide, Mike. So the next slide is uh our proposed sewer capital projects. The first one is sewer manhole rehabilitation. Uh, every year, we, we try to clean and inspect um approximately ten percent of our system. Um, we have approximately sixty-five miles of sewer. So we try to do six or seven miles per year of cleaning and inspecting. And I have in there a hundred thousand dollars to do that. The next item, again, a three-hour, which is repair, replace, and rehabilitate for seventy-five thousand. And the, that brings the sewer capital to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. And again, that comes from our sewer operations fund. And again, that comes from our sewer operations fund. And the, again, no, we have no sewer extension projects planned for this year. Next slide, Mike. The next sheet is just the list of our goals, our goals for our water department. We try to provide the highest quality of potable water. Water with sufficient pressure and volume for fire protection throughout the town as efficiently as possible while maintaining the highest quality drinking water standards that comply with DPH standards. During 2019 and similar to 2020, we collected and tested approximately 204 physical, 204 bacteria, 102 disinfectant byproduct samples, and we test approximately 40 sites for lead and copper every three years. Then I also list the list of our major assets that require maintenance and inspections annually, biannually. We have three water booster pump stations, approximately 67 miles of water main. We have over 635 public fire hydrants, 70 private fire hydrants, approximately 1,175 watergate valves, approximately 4,138 water customers, four meter, quarter meter chambers, and 11 pressure-reducing valves and six PRV chambers. Next slide, Mike. And the last slide is our, our goal of our sewer department, to operate and maintain the sewage collection system in a professional and efficient manner to reduce inflow and infiltration, to reduce blockages, while adhering to all state and federal environmental compliance requirements. We're also responsible for FOG program, which is fats, oils, and grease reduction. We have over 4,250 sewer customers, over 65 miles of sewer lines, over 2,000 sanitary sewer manholes. We maintain and operate seven sewage pump stations. We maintain and operate five emergency standby generators. And we maintain two sewage meter stations. That concludes my presentation for our budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council members may have.
Does anyone have a question they would like to ask?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know in years past, there was a lot of discussion. I know at one point lawyers were involved between us and the City of Waterbury in negotiating the costs for water and sewer from them. I was just wondering if that was resolved or if that's still in the works, or where does that stand?
Okay, that, that's still in court at the present time. The last court date was back in December. And it's still in the judge's hands right now. Waterbury is looking for a summary judgment. And our legal staff, we're in the process of waiting for a judge's decision, basically. And I, I haven't talked to our legal staff for, for a while, so I don't think there's any conclusion as of yet. And we, you know, we have plans in case something happens that's not in our favor. You know, we, you know, we're looking at all our avenues, you know? So there's no, no conclusion at this present time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Herm. We can't, start again, Herm, you're muted.
To the chair again.
Yes, please.
Mr. Caterino, 40 years ago, when I decided to move to town to be closer to my work, coming from a nearby major urban center, one of the reasons that I did purchase the house that I had built was that it was in the part of town covered by water and sewer. Very desirable for future homeowners when they move into municipality to have such an efficient, well-staffed, and customer-friendly staff that you've continued in your role as head of water and sewer. And I want to thank you and commend your staff from both personal and professional dealings with you over the last 40 years.
Okay, Herm.
Thank you very much, Herm.
You're welcome. Through the chair again, I have a question for Mr. Caterino.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Regarding the increase in revenue that we have this year as opposed to last year, is part of that because of the completion of the project out in Bunker Hill? The extension of Bunker Hill Road, Conker Drive, Lexington Drive? That was very capably done by your staff along with Public Works and the contractors? Can you say that was the increase in revenue?
No, I don't think so. Our, our sewer operations, we had an increase in revenue because we had a large decrease in expenditures. Namely, it was a large bond that we recently paid off. And that, that, you know, allowed us, because we didn't spend that money towards the bond, we had more money in our, our fund balance. So that's why we have, we have surplus, basically. But that's, you know, I don't know how long that's gonna stay there because of our situation in that we're in with Waterbury right now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business under the agenda.
I move to approve the resolution as presented and titled, "A Resolution With Respect to the Authorization, Issuance, and Sale of Non- and Sale of Not Exceeding $11 Million Town of War Town General Obligation Refunding Bonds."
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chairwoman, I have some questions.
All right, I saw Jeff's hand first, yes, Jeff.
In respect to the amounts that we're asking for here for the bond issue, 11 million, how did we come to that particular figure of $11 million?
I have Sue speak to that, but I believe it would be your bond.
Yes, through the chair. The 11 million is what we're refunding. With that being said, it's refunding with the lower interest rates, our savings will be there. It's not that we're going out for bonding for 11 million.
So it's, it's refunding that now. Do we know, we had talked, when we talked to the bonding agent last time, that this process takes several months?
It does, once, yes.
So right now, obviously, the interest rates are very advantageous to do that. But is there any kind of scenario where if, once this finally gets processed through, if the interest rates have moved upward, you know, there's potential for some inflation to, to affect the economy, and it could affect treasury rates? Is it, would it be possible that we're not committing ourselves at that point? We can step back from it if it won't be advantageous to do this?
That's correct, that's what will happen. One, and if this is approved by you tonight, we will be hitting the ground tomorrow, starting it right away. Sorry to anticipate a month, maybe month and a half before it's all settled.
Okay.
Definitely an opportunity for the town to save possibly up to $950,000 over the life of these bonds.
Makes sense.
Rachel, you had a question?
Yeah, I think that actually answers all my questions. So refunding is essentially the same idea as refinancing, like where to refinance. And so my other question is, in terms of just the process, and Madam Chair, maybe you could answer this in terms of this being a resolution? I'm just wondering that you could define that in terms of what that means for the process? It sounds like we approve it, and then, and then obviously, it goes forward as of tomorrow. Is that accurate?
Council has to authorize that, and we do that by way of resolution and motion. Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously with those council members present.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $11,984 for increased costs for fire district hydrant fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sue, if you would explain this to the council members, please.
Yes, absolutely. I do apologize for having to come for an appropriation for this. We normally get billed twice a year from the Watertown Fire District. In August, we made our first payment, and I received a second payment in January that was due, and it increased by the $11,000. I've had multiple conversations with them in their office. They had a rate increase that we were never told about, aware of. And I did ask them, you know, out of courtesy, being the town, that they should have probably given us a heads up that this was coming. They realized they didn't, they apologized moving forward, they will let us know. But this was due to an increase they had for the rental on the hydrants.
And that was effective when, Sue?
Well, it passed after the budget passed last year. So that's why in this current year, now the upcoming year, I budgeted the extra money that will be needed. But I'm short for this year.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions? All those in favor of approving the money, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Reluctantly, the council passes the additional money needed for the fire district.
I move to approve the acceptance of a gift of $1,200 from David Kaufman for the purchase of equipment for the police canine. I further move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of the $1,200 to be placed in the police department equipment line item for the purchase of equipment for the police canine, as the donation was deposited into the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
So you understand the process. We received a gift, we're accepting the gift, but it's gotta go in the general fund. And it will have to be moved to the police department line item. Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed to the gift? Anyone abstaining? All those in favor? Oh, I said that already, it passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $2,326.33 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously and makes lots of people happy.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm not asking for those objections.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, stay safe.
Good night, everybody.